Economic Development and Tourism come to order. Clerk call the rolls. Councilor Raposo?
Here.
Councilor Washington?
Here.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and deemed acknowledged and permissible. Is anybody here for Citizen Import? Anybody sign up for Citizen Import? Okay. Item number one on the agenda is a resolution to the Economic Development and Tourism Committee to convene with Administration Director... Oh, we have the minutes, sorry. Looking to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve, yes.
Of September 5th. There was a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, the Economic Development and Tourism Committee to convene with Administration Director of Traffic and representatives of communities throughout the city to look at improving the signage within the city to direct visitors to various attractions. We invited a lot of people. I didn't want anybody to be left out. I tried to think of everyone possible that would be able to assist in giving us ideas. So, if people want to come down, and we'll sit around here. Laura? Traffic, because we talk about signage. And Steph? Seth? Mike? Yep. Ashley? David, Sandy, John? Pa...Gail? Yeah, come on. Do we have enough cheers? Did we get enough cheers? I think we have enough. If we counted right. Pat? Yeah. One of the council chairs there. Oh, okay. Seth, want to grab a chair?
Yeah, I have one. I thought I was going to give it to Catherine, but you can't.
Oh, you have one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we were short one.
That's it. That's good.
Andrew's going to help. Oh, here he is.
Hardest working man in show business, right there.
Okay, basically, when I come off of any highway exit in Fall River, I don't see a sign that directs us to anything that we have. It doesn't tell us where the waterfront is. It doesn't tell us where the Narrows is. It doesn't tell us where the Battleship is. You know, there's a lot like that that I think we're missing. So, I...before we start talking, just so that people viewing will know who everybody is at the table, if we could just go around the table, give your name and address for the record.
Dave Dennis, Creative Arts Network, 132 Highland Avenue, Fall River.
Sandy Dennis, Creative Arts Network, 132 Highland Avenue, Fall River, Mass.
John Grant, 116 Rock Street.
Gail Powers, 731 Prospect Street, Fall River.
Stephanie MacArthur, City of Fall River Traffic Department.
Laura Perera, City of Fall River Traffic Department.
Mike Deon, Director of Community Development for the City of Fall River.
Seth Aiken, City Administrator.
Kristin Carroll, Battleship Cove, Address 158 Summerfield Street, Fall River.
Ashley Okino, Executive Director, Fall River Arts and Culture Coalition, 200 Pocasset Street, Fall River.
Patrick Norton, 1225 New Boston Road, Narrow Center for Arts.
And we have one more joining us.
I'll grab a chair.
I got you, Seth.
No, Patrick's got you beat. I mean, Patrick, Andrew's got you beat.
Your name?
He wants to bring up all the chairs.
Jason Bouchard, Iraqi, 45 Bigelow Street. I chair the Historical Commission.
And last but not least?
Alexander Silva, 148 Purchase Street, Preservation Society, Fall River.
I had also requested that Jim Lopes, who works at the...
Hightower Building.
What is that?
Hightower Building, DCR.
Right. And he sent down...he sent us an email because unfortunately, he couldn't be here. Do you have a copy of his email? And he had some suggestions to make. And he said that the signage on Route 95 West as you enter Fall River, there's a sign that says waterfront attractions. But for visitors who are seeking Battleship Cove, Heritage Park, the gates, et cetera, that's not very helpful. Why can't the signs be like the ones on 195 in New Bedford, which lists different designations by name? Whaling City Museum, et cetera. He said, "Coming from Providence, it's even worse." Laura, would you want to read the rest of what he wrote?
Signage on the 195 east of Providence, it's even worse. There's no indication where the exit to the Bragger Bridge is in front of the waterfront. Our visitors complain about this often. In both directions on 95, there's no signs that tell you how to get to the Narrows, which I have to say is massive. The sign is tricky and the Narrows is a straight trip between the two Wuhupas... Anyone looking for performing arts center will end up at White's. The Narrows is...deserves better. The lights posted on the banners, brackets along Duval and President Avenue down to center, along the waterfront are sorely in need of being replaced. They are most in bad shape. They are an effective tool for promoting culture activities throughout Fall River. Instead, they are broken and empty. The Veterans Memorial Bicentennial Park has the worst signage in the city. The entranceway at the President's sign is polluted. Many signs are in total disarray. All of them are a necessity. There's overlapping and no congruent to the...they provide bad imaging for the city. One large sign, wall sign with all the signs.
And Andrew will read six, seven, eight, and nine? We're all trying to pitch in because it's a big meeting.
Sure. The city should promote Veterans Memorial Bicentennial Park as Veterans Memorial Park, in which visitors are interested in seeking the two memorials, kind of consolidating that name, as far as the sign is concerned. City portion of the boardwalk is named Bicentennial Boardwalk. State portion is the Robert Correa Boardwalk. After our legislators honored Rep. Correa, we should respect this. Instead, we get local tourist publications that refer to the entire boardwalk as one. Parking signs throughout the city would be helpful, although there may be some that I am not aware of. I see none at the waterfront. Seeing additional parking in the waterfront needs help and direction. Likewise, the two Heritage Park lots, north and south, are officially named the DCR for Heritage State Park Lots. There is no Carousel Lot or Battleship Cove Lot. There are both DCR tenants, promotional events at the gates and elsewhere along the waterfront that want to identify public parking should use the correct name. There are even maps out there that say Battleship Lot. They are wrong, as many people are using GPS. These various false titles complicate the parking issue. And then lastly, the city would benefit from some themed trails that guide you to cultural historical sites. We're off to a good start with the Cultural District. At Heritage Park, we're working on a military-themed walking trail. It'll guide you from the Maritime Museum to Bicentennial Park. Along the way, visitors can learn about Fall River's military history from the King Philip War, the American Revolution, Civil War, World Wars, to present. There is much potential for other cultural, industrial, and historical-themed trails around the city. Signed, Jim Lopes.
And Jim does a lot down at the park. Sandy had a great event there on tourism with the former Lieutenant Governor Murray, who was there, and talked a lot with other communities and things that they're doing. It was a worthwhile event to be at. But my question is, to all of you who participate in, you know, a lot of the different venues in Fall River, what would work for you? And I don't know if community development has money for signage in certain areas, or if some of it, if we're looking at, let's get this done while they're doing 79 so that we know. I hate being behind the boat. Like, let's look at what we can do for the upcoming spring and summer season. If anybody has any suggestions, we can go around the room. Does anybody want to start? Dave? Here, Dave, take this.
Basically, there are...I just think there are five principles that we...the Fall River's missed for years. I mean, I think everybody said they're on this table, you just drive around the city, and if you've been involved in any of this, it's obvious. You know, we need signs that are uniformed, themed, descriptive, instructive, and in the right locations. And that's exactly what we'll do. Whether you're trying to get to the Narrows, you're trying to get down to the Battleship, or any other location on the waterfront, it's not easy. It's a lot easier since they finished the accelerated bridge program. At least you can get on and off the waterfront when you get down there. If you recall years ago, you could get down there, you could never get off. We don't have a business information center anymore, where people can stop and get information about the city. We have these generic signs. Sandra has a bunch of other signs. We've been away recently in New York for the weekend. You go any other place, you can see descriptive signs. You go through 195 heading down to New York, through Connecticut, there are all sorts of descriptive signs, sub-base, everything. You know, we used to have those. We had...we used to have, you know, I think they mentioned the Battleship Cove, Narrows, I don't know who else, there are a few other things on there. Now, they still just say waterfront attractions. Who cares? What does that mean? You know, if you're coming, if you're heading down the Cape, if you're heading east, you got, you know, a family of four, two kids in the backseat, what does that mean to them? It means absolutely nothing. If it said, you know, waterfront attraction carousel, Battleship Cove, something more descriptive, you know, I think people would be a lot more interested in getting off the highway. People aren't going to go to what they don't know or don't see, which is why most states have descriptive signage. You go down to...head down to New Jersey, Battleship New Jersey, you'll see Battleship New Jersey signs all over the place. I mean, they're literally billboard-sized signs. We don't have anything. So, anybody coming through, you know, the City of Fall River, or leaving the City of Fall River, east or west, there's no descriptive signage. There's nothing when you get in the city, there's a hodgepodge of signs all over the waterfront. Yeah, they are doing Route 79 over, and hopefully, there'll be, you know, some uniformity, there'll be some descriptive signs down there. Listen, people don't want to go anywhere where they can't get to and get out of. Tourists want things to be easy. That's why you go to any of the major theme parks, they make it easy. There are signs all over the place. Go to Disney and any of those places, lots of signs, they make it easy. We don't have a business information center. We haven't had one in years. I've been saying this since I chaired this committee years ago. Still hasn't happened. These are obvious things that just have not happened for a variety of reasons. I think some of this, and I'll say this publicly, some of this is the responsibility of our state delegation. Those are state signs. I don't know why they ever took them down in the first place and changed them from descriptive signs to generic signs, but they did. I think we need...this group needs to, you know, actively lobby the state delegation to get those signs back up, just like everybody's...and by the way, there are other descriptive signs in Massachusetts. So, it's not just, you know, it's Fall River. I don't know who else has these types of signs, but there are other places in the states that have very descriptive signage. We know, Battleship knows it. We've seen them, so I don't know why we have them down here. But that's just the beginning, because once they get in the city, you know, that's our responsibility. And again, you know, some uniformity, some description, instructive signs in the right locations. People aren't going to come into the city unless they can get in and out, they can go where they want to go, so.
Sandy, do you have anything to add?
I don't have a lot to add. I just have a lot of pictures and examples of signs in the city that truly, they are a mess. I guess, one, that it's not disturbing, but I mean, we have a huge globe liquor sign on one of the highway things. I mean, advertising a liquor store, but yet we can't advertise our attractions. So, I mean, it's great because, you know, economic development, it's helping the liquor store. But what I also found is interesting is that we actually do have descriptive signage in the city. I don't know how long ago they were done, and they...
I can talk on that one.
Okay, so I'm going to skip over that then, because they're mostly throughout the downtown area, I noticed. I personally like the style of them. I'm driving, you can read them. So, we do have them, and I think if you just follow that design, they're great. We have things up there still, like for the Black Island Ferry.
Were those the ones that Alan Amaro had given us money to do? No. Okay. All right. John? Oh, Sandy, you done?
Yeah, I guess.
No, 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 I don't want to cut you short.
But no, Dave mentioned, we had gone to New York over the weekend, and I guess it is disturbing, because we did reach out to the state delegation years ago. And, I mean, the Battleship's not on one of our highway signs, and neither is, you know, you could have the historic carousel, you can have the Narrows on these signs, you can have the Battleship, the Maritime Museum, gates of the city, the waterfront Cultural District. I mean, they really promote their attractions. That's in Connecticut, on the way home. So, if they can do it, there's no reason, you know, that I think we can't do it. But I'll pass it along to John. I don't want...
John, you up there?
No, I kind of agree with Dave that we need to get them from the highway here, so we've got to have more than just waterfront attractions. We've got to list what's there. Because when you go to the Bedford, or when you're traveling down 95, you constantly see things coming up, attractions. And somehow, when, I guess with 79, when they have signage, we should hopefully be uniform in our signage throughout with the tourists. So, I think we should look to see what they're going to do and tie it in with the 79 project, but...
That's why I wanted to have the meeting. Now, I would make...see that we could tie that all in.
Yeah, that'd be...
I mean, I didn't look at the Durfee at Lafayette Durfee House, you know, to have a plaque there, what this is, you know, because there's a lot that we have. Our own people don't know how much we have in the city.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think there's a plaque for Lafayette House, or even, I think there's a little one for the Fall River Circle Society, but not just...you don't know if you're driving by.
Right.
You know, so, even Lizzie Borden House, we don't have anything going there, so...
Something to point you to, and not just on the building itself.
I mean, I think if we highlighted Battleship Cove and the Vietnam Memorial Wall and Bicentennial Park, that would bring a lot of people in, so those are two key points.
Well, I know they're doing a sign. Diamond is actually doing a sign for the wall, because there's a sign there that says, "Vietnam Memorial Wall coming soon." No, it's already there, so I have a meeting December 7th with them. But my thing is, put the brakes on that till we find out what kind of sign we want to have, so that it's uniform and you identify with it. I think that's better. Gail?
I'm not going to add too much, it's like beating a dead horse, because it's a great idea. I can't wait to see what Laura has to say, I can tell you.
I think what you shared with me about Nashville?
Yeah, one thing...one thing I...was in Nashville, and I was walking down the street by Woolworth's, and there was this great sign in the sidewalk, and it talked about the sit-in back in the 50s, where black people sat at the counter for service, and they were attempted to get thrown out, and that whole event happened. So, walking by Woolworth's, I looked up, and there's this great sign, and it looks something like this. Sign, and it just was informational. This is the site of Woolworth's, that back in 1952, these four people sat down, and there was a whole history of what happened right there. And every place I turned around, on corners, in front of churches, was informational signage about a building, an event, an area, or just something. So, I researched it, and it's actually an...like a map, that you put your cursor over it, and a little insert pops up, and it tells you the location, and what the building is, what the location is, and what happened there. And it's...
Drivable.
Everybody's got a smartphone. You pop onto the website, and it brings you all the way through the city to signs like this, which is what I just showed you. The sign here, the cemetery sign, I actually had made through the CPA a while ago. It's a cemetery on Purchase Street, which people don't even know it's there. It's right behind the Bank 5 parking lot, right where the church is. Believe it or not, there's a cemetery there. It's a Bowen-Borden Cemetery. Andrew Borden's father, Bowen's father, who's...the son was part of the Underground Railroad. So, that's how that started. There's a...one side has family tree of who's buried in there, and the other side is just a history of the family, basically. So, this...there could be a sign like this all over the city. Up at Columbia Street, right about this point, back in 1803, this was the delineation line between the town of Fall River and the town of Tiverton. Just things, there's things all over the city that are just there. This is the site of the Fall River, the Battle of Fall River, right about this location. We could go on and on. Every mill in the city could have a sign. So, that's kind of a whole separate ball of wax, but this is my idea on signs and locations.
Thanks, Gail. Stephanie, Laura?
Good afternoon. So, this basically started in 2008 with Mayor Bob Correa, and he met with some UMass students, and I don't know if we had...I don't know if Sandy, you were involved. I know he had a committee, and they all sat down, the same thing that we're doing here today, come up with some signage that would direct people to the park and Bicentennial Park. We had Santa Cristo, we had Lizzie Borden's House. I mean, there was quite a few things on it. We had them throughout the city. We still have one right here at the corner of Sullivan Drive and South Main. We had one before 79 became what it is today. We had them directing them into the city. A lot of them got taken down, especially when they built the first phase of 79. They were removed, they were never put back because it became state property. So, just going forward, what we have to remember, yes, you can't have signs just in the city indicating where things are. I think you want to attract people that are on 195 East, 195 West, or coming in from 24, whatever. So, you want signs like other cities and towns have it. New Bedford, Newport, we don't have to go very far. Attleboro has signs. But when it comes to state, you've got to get their permission. You've got to fill out a permit, it's got to have the dimensions of the signs, it's got to have what you want on it. And usually, if it's state, it's green, the color green. If it's to do with, like, the Battleship or anything like that, they're brown, because now you're going into federal, and so they have their different colors. So, that's something that, before we can even, you know, think about where they're going to go, is come up with who will, you know, be able to contact the state, that we can even do that. We had a hard time having them put on 24 North and South indicating for 18-wheelers to use Innovation Way. And that was, we had to pull some strings to do that. That took a few years. As well as letting people know where Charlton Memorial Hospital was in St. Anne's. A lot of people complained that you didn't know, you know, where they were. So, we did it, but we had to get their permission. So, we've got...if you're coming on 195 West and you take the Plymouth Avenue, we put two signs there that indicate St. Anne's is to this side, and, you know, Charlton's the other side. We wanted to put it on the highway itself, but they denied it. So, yeah, so they're pretty funny about what signage can go on highways. And I agree. I think that a big sign should go with different locations. They do it in other highways, 195...24, if you travel on 24, you see it for other states. I think they should have it here as well. So, some of those signs do exist. I think the key is come up with this design, and then come up with you want on everything on those signs. And I agree, it should have arrows, like the one that we have on the corner of South Main and Sullivan, it tells you to go to the south end and what's in the south end. The one that we had on North Main and Bedford told you what was down on the waterfront. Of course, there's a lot of new venues now, there's other places too that you can add to, but the thing to think about is come up with a design, then what you want to put on the signs, and then whatever's to go in the city. I know Bob Correa was able to get some monies, so we didn't have to...the city didn't have to really spend any money. The only thing that we did then, we had someone then get a map and just point where they wanted the signs to go, and then Maintenance Department did put them up. We did put them up wherever people wanted them to go. Now, they can't go on state property, so that would be something that the state...you could ask permission for us to go, but I think that sign that we were going to put on 24, just before President Avenue, because it was all rotted, and it was a big to-do, who was going to put it up? And then they wanted a contractor to put it up. So, those are the little details that you might come across that you should try to solve it before.
That was the one that I wanted to repair, and we had to go through the whole hoop lot to get permission. Took us like six months, seven months to get that one signed.
I mean, as a city, I think I'm speaking for the city, I don't think we have a problem putting signs within the city.
Right.
Because you don't just need them on the highway, you also need them as you're coming into the city. Okay, that's where it is, you know? Granted, 195's going to tell you, yeah, we have Lizzie Borden, but how do I get to it? So, that would be important. For P's for parking, we had to do it when we took over the Pearl Garage and the Third Garage. So, we have a lot of P's throughout the downtown area that tells you how to get to Pearl and how to get to Third. We also have maps in each garage telling you which each garage is at, and some certain location. We also used to have, we made seven of them, and it was a big map. We had it on North Park at Highland Avenue, we had it at the park on South Main, I don't know, is it Abbott Park? Then we had it at Lafayette Park, and it was just a big sign with all the venues with their phone numbers and when they had events. But, you know, different administrations come aboard, so we used to have like the Christmas Parade, the Veterans Parade, anything that came up, we had Patrick's venue down there with the phone number, so that people would go by and they could have the phone number and call and say, you know...so, we ended up taking those down, we were told to take those down. So, we paid for those, the city paid for those, so we have that as well. So, I mean, like I said, I don't think it's going to be an issue within the city, I think it's an issue if you're going to put on state property.
Mike? If there are...my question to you would be, if there are some signs that need to be in low-income districts, would those be something you'd pay for?
You've just got to be very careful with community development money. Everyone should know that community development money has to be used for the benefit of low-income people in the city. It is ineligible to use block grant money for the promotion of the city as a whole. So, you have to be very, very careful. Any streets that are being redone, any sidewalks that are being redone in the city that are in low-income areas, the community development agency could definitely pay for signage in those areas. Signage on 79 directing people to tourism attractions and stuff would not be an eligible item. Pointing people to certain low-income areas in the city, I think Dennis's might...I think it might have originated with you. Five, six years ago, we put up a sign, "Welcome to the Historic Highlands," and it was on the border of a low-income, high-income area, and it just made the, you know, a couple inches more, and it would have been high income. So, we were able to assist with that. We've done a lot of signage in parks in the low-income areas. So, you just have to be very careful, you know, what... So you just have to be very careful, you know, what, what you're trying to attempt with the sign and, you know, where is it in a low-income, low-income or high-income area district. Right now, I'll be straight up with you, our budget is a hundred percent committed. If, if there is something that you'd like to do, we're gonna go through our request for funding process starting in January of two thousand twenty-four, coming up in the next couple of months. But right now, community development has, credit card has been declined at many places.
The other, and I'm sorry.
No, Laura.
The other thing too, Historical Society also helped the city. They paid for all the signs that have historic. Yeah, that have the historical, where historical is like President Avenue, certain locations, the street signs are a little bit different. But Historical Society paid for like, I think eighty. I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, preservation, sorry. And then, so that way you know that that's a historical area and it's got like, you know, old buildings and stuff that, they help that too. The other thing we need to be careful is, so with the second phase of seventy-nine being under construction now, we will know whether, because right now it belongs to the state, so we can't even, you know, do anything to it right now. Once the completion of the job is done, it's completed, all the little punch lists are done, they will give us a letter stating now it belongs to you. So most likely, we're gonna own all of the wall. Because in the past, we only owned certain portions, but now you're gonna have traffic lights, intersection and all of that. Most likely, the letter is gonna state that we're gonna be responsible for signage and all that. So that's something that, you know, we can, we can put up ourselves too. But if we have, let's, because it's, the project is gonna finish in twenty twenty-six, I think the beginning. So if you have the signs already done at that time, when they're putting up their signs.
They'll put up.
Because they already have a list of all the signs that go on, on the wall, you know, either side, so.
You know, whatever.
Could they pay?
Whatever type of.
Take it out of there.
Whatever type of signs that we develop should be uniform, like everybody's saying, and should be somewhat classy. And, you know, we shouldn't doctor the whole entire city with signs everywhere either. I think they should be in key locations.
Right.
Pointing people in the correct direction. You know, we can, we can, I can show everyone a map of what's low-income areas in the city. Get that to you, Linda, if you wanna, you know, look at that and when you guys are planning down the road.
Yeah, I'll look at that. I think that's good. Seth, do you see the, the? Do you see what Gail had shown? Do you see that as being something feasible? Because I know we're doing work with our computer team and doing new computer stuff to have that out there.
Those are wayfinding apps, that's what those are. And it's, it would be extremely valuable for the city to incorporate that. What happens with some of those is if you get the right app, as people are getting close to an occasion, everybody's on their phone, things starts, things starts popping up, Battleship Cove, Narrows, Cove Restaurant, all these places. It'll stop popping up with the description, Battleship Cove, blah, 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 you know, and then, so they're extremely valuable. Listen, we get ninety-one thousand cars a day. My numbers is a math, I said this a thousand times. Ninety-one thousand cars a day on average go over that Bragger Bridge.
We gotta get them to get off that Bragger Bridge and come in.
Between May and June, they, the old business information center, I'm sorry, used to average about five hundred cars a day between Memorial Day and Labor Day. When that closed, some of the venues in the city, including, I think it was Lizzie's, Historical Society lost more than fifty percent of their business overnight. So we're missing, we're missing a giant marketing opportunity by not getting these people off the bridge, especially during Memorial Day and Labor Day. You know, the Commonwealth spent two hundred and twenty million dollars on the accelerated bridge program. Another hundred and thirty-five million on Route seventy-nine, several hundred million on the, on the Veterans Bridge. We're not utilizing those. Those are giant-sized marketing opportunities. People are driving through the city with money in their pocket and they're leaving none of it or very little of it in the city. So the faster we get, get this done, I mean, I didn't, is there opera money left for signage? I mean, would have been a very good use of the return on investment would probably would have been very good with people coming into the city. You know, average family of four gets off the bridge, they get down, gets off the bridge, they get down below. They spend some money at one of the venues down there. Doesn't take, you know, a hundred dollars for a car, average family of four. You know, well as I do, it doesn't spend, doesn't take too much to spend a hundred bucks anymore. You know, kids go, kids go to the bathroom, they go to the Battleship Cove, they get something to eat. It's, the tax revenue is huge, you know, the meal tax and everything else. We're losing millions of dollars a year, millions. If you only have to do is just add it up. So, anyway.
I feel like you asked me a question.
I did. What do you think about something like that? I know we're working on, we're working on our computer website now. And what do you think about something like that?
So mapping and wayfinding is something we've actually talked about pretty extensively. To, to do the app, to actually have it in place, isn't the hard part. The expensive part is, is actually building it out so it's actually functional and then maintaining it. Not saying that that's a deal breaker, but that just happens to be the thing that we found as we've been looking at. How do you build a website that has all the functionality that you need? What we decided to do, at least as in the initial phase, is to invest the money in online permitting as opposed to investing the money in wayfinding. I'm not saying we're not gonna do it, but we had to make some difficult decisions as to what functionality we were gonna build in. We're still looking at that. And I think it's something that really has tremendous value and I think we can probably do it and then build on it, build on it, build on it, rather than just say, oh, we can't do it and then never get back to it, because that happens a lot.
Right.
I will say that I think a lot of this does depend on the development of the Route seventy-nine project and how that goes forward. There's an entire budget for signage in the Route seventy-nine project. And so right now, the way that plan is evolving is that there is a kind of a placeholder. And, you know, we just use, you know, purely for engineering and design purposes, a, a, you know, a basic footprint and a basic height without any design elements at all. And so in the next thirty to sixty days, and I talked to Mr. Aguirre, our Director of Engineering and Planning today, in the next thirty to sixty days, he's gonna convene a committee with members of the public and members of the administration and members of, of the whole community that has an interest in this wayfinding piece and try to get some, some thoughtful people to, to weigh in on what those signs should look like.
So I'll give you a list of everyone that's at this meeting and that might help. Because obviously, everyone that's here cares about looking at what we can do to get more tourism, more people into the city.
I think Mr. Aguirre would, would welcome that and so would I. But I, I can tell you that because this is gonna be the first opportunity we've had in a while to do, you know, to really invest in meaningful signage over a large area, because there's gonna be a lot of signage. That may be the thing that identifies the, the visual, the visual cues that we're looking for in the rest of the signage, because there's gonna be so much of it. So I think the timing makes a lot of sense. I think working with Mr. Aguirre and all those folks, whether we end up owning that property or not, because that is very much sort of in flux right now. The signage is gonna happen and it's gonna get designed and the city is gonna have a significant say in what it looks like and what's on it. So knowing that, we should get as many people that know the city and care about the city as part of that, as is reasonable. You know, still being able to make a decision, because sometimes too many cooks, you know, that whole thing. All that said, I think that signage hopefully will drive how we think about signage going forward just because there's gonna be that much of it being put in place and the investment's gonna be that significant.
You know what bothers me, Mr. Akins, is that I've been here a long time. And the length of time it takes to get anything done is just frustrating. It's like, come on, we need to move, we need to do it, let's get it done, let's get it done, let's get it done. And unfortunately, we've had one administration after another after another. I worked with Bob Correa on doing this and it was Maureen Flanagan. We had the trolley, the trolley went around, looped the whole city. It stopped at different places where people could get, and it was wonderful. And all of a sudden, he was gone, the trolleys are broke. I know we're getting new trolleys, I know we put in for them. So I'm just, the reason I'm having the meeting so early, you know, is because we need to have something done. If we can't do seventy-nine right now, but we know what it's gonna look like, great. But at least we can start working on what are we gonna do in the city locally and getting people off the highways and then do seventy-nine. And if it means we need to contact people in the tourism office on the state, I think Sandy and Dave know them very well, have had years of conversation with them. And our state delegation is always, always willing to help out. So if it means that's one piece, we have to get the state delegation and the signage off the highway, then let's try to work on that because it's gonna take a while to do. And maybe another group work on what are we gonna do within the city? And maybe Dan Aguirre and that, can we do a map like this? Can we have a listing, a sheet with the addresses and things, where things are, because people can Google it? But I think Counselor Repose had a question.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about the website, Seth. Is there a way the city, the new city website can index all of the different attractions across the city and then possibly the integration of like QR coding? Where, let's say, somebody comes into the city, welcome to Forver, there's a QR code, they scan it and boom, you have an entire list of all, all the different attractions in the city, which then link back to those particular establishments or, or attractions or whatever it may be?
So I think that in conjunction with our GIS mapping, and we have some amazing people doing that and it's, it's actually really well done. That's something that we've relied on for that sort of back-of-the-house functionality. So if there's an app that we can use to leverage that functionality, I think it's very possible. And I also know that, just in terms of, of thinking and talking about wayfinding and how we're, you know, how we're directing people to different events. And I know events as opposed to spots are different. But I know that Viva has actually done a really tremendous job in, in talking about that sort of thing as well. So there's a lot of partners in the city, I think, that are all thinking about that same thing. It's just a question of pulling the trigger and getting it done. And I think we have the tools to do it, to be honest with you. It's just, it's a question of, you know, I think understanding what the visual language of the Route seventy-nine signage is gonna be. And even before it goes up, we don't need for it to go up. We just need to know what, you know, what kind of fonts and what kind of shapes and what kind of colors. And then once we know that, you can actually do signage and you can do digital, you know, electronic signage through smartphones all around the city. But just having an agreement on that small bit of information, font, color, you know, what's our palette, that sort of thing. Just like you're building a website, that will give you the, I think that'll give you the tools to do all sorts of things. And they're not as hard as they used to be. Maintaining is always the key, because you don't wanna make something great and then have it be obsolete in a year. You know, once businesses change names or, you know, things, things get put, you know, put into place and no one records them. So that's where the GIS thing is, thing is phenomenal, because that's being constantly updated. It's an incredible tool.
Couple lines, just because I have an event.
Go ahead.
You have a question?
No, no, go ahead. No, no, no.
I just have some questions.
Oh, no, go ahead.
So I've been doing this a while and like, this is like the third mayor. The first mayor, we actually, the Narrows and the Battleship were on the sign and each, or in the Historical Society and I think the Culinary Institute, and you had to pay twenty-five hundred dollars a year to be on the sign. That was, that's really what it was. It was ten thousand dollars that generated from the sign. And for some reason, that sign went away and they, and I know why it went away, because people complained because you can only put four on there and theirs wasn't one of the four, so generic became the word. So that, that's the history lesson on that. And I'm not convinced that, you know, we've talked to the state delegation, that may be something down the line. I personally, I hate to be the skunk of the long party, I'm not convinced signage is really the issue here. I think the age of GPS, you find where you're going and we're in about the most unknown place in Forver and people seem to find us pretty well. I think it's a, there's a more comprehensive look at how we, I think what Ms. Powers said about her signage might be something historical in nature, but I think a hodgepodge of signs is not what we need and I think a more comprehensive look and I think maybe the Route seventy-nine project. But I think a, a creative look at what signage is in the twenty-first century, not what signage is in the twentieth century. And I think that's, we tend to look at things like what was good in the past. And sometimes, you know, the past looks a lot better in the rearview mirror than it does right when it's happening. So I just want us to be aware and think forward-looking and really be creative. And I think it's more an app-based and that kind of a thing than a sign or anything like that. And I think if, you know what they say, Linda, build and it will come. I think really the issue is that Forver really needs to work on like promoting itself because that is what's gonna get people off the highway, not a sign. Because most people have a destination in mind when they get in their car. Rarely, someone who's studied this all day long, rarely is just someone just going in and pulling off. Occasionally it happens and people look into a restaurant or a bathroom and things like that. But in all my time traveling, I generally know where I'm going, when I'm gonna be there. So I think really the issue for Forver is to try to become, get on people's radar and more before they even get to the Bragger Bridge or anything like that.
All along the way.
Well, we've had some, again, and there's been, you know, this hasn't happened in a vacuum, if I may be so bold to say so. There's been, the Narrows has had signs all across I ninety-five and I ninety-five, Viva Fall River has done the same. Other organizations, it would have to be somewhat organization-driven too, because that's just, and those things are expensive. But again, we have to think about like what's really working and build on that, rather than trying to like this constant reinvent the wheel. Because I've, no offense, Bob Correa didn't pay for those signs, Jeff Carpenter and Arts United pay for those signs. So most of these, most of the signage that's taken place were done by the Preservation Society, the Narrow Center and other organizations, not the city to begin with, if I may be so bold to say so. So that's what's gonna be the driving force moving forward, not this meeting, the entities who can figure it out better and find a way to promote themselves. And look, and really look at a twenty-first Forver. We, we are spending too much time looking about what happened in the past, not just at this meeting, but just an overall view. And I don't think it's signage, I think GPS is where it's at and unfortunately, I have to go to this other thing, but I'll give my.
I'm so glad. Yeah, I wouldn't have to, because I was gonna kind of go along those lines. When I travel with my family and I travel often, I just Google things to do in the area and then what pops up through GPS. So I'm very interested in this wayfinding. I don't know if it's an app or anything, but you said that there is a cost to it and that's the problem of the backend building it and then the cost to maintain it. What does that cost look like? Is that thousands, tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands? What is in the ballpark, does that look like? Because I, I agree that, I think most people are using GPS and, and things to find, I'm not against signage, it's not what I'm saying, but I think that that is huge to your point. And so I'm very interested in the cost behind this wayfinding.
I'll give you some real numbers. It was probably a year ago that we started looking at it. And we just decided, you know what, we had to make some tough decisions based on what, what money we had. And we decided to go online permitting because it was something that was, you know, so, so long overdue. But the wayfinding piece, it kind of runs the gamut, right? I mean, there, there's certainly, you know, kind of retail, home business level stuff and then there's, you know, enterprise level. So it's just a question of what you wanna spend and what you wanna do. I'll get some numbers.
Yeah, that's, I'd be very interested because I do, I mean, we, we have some opera money left and if this, you know, it all depends on the cost, if it's, you know, looking at ten thousand, a hundred thousand, I don't know. But, so that was my question with that. I yield, Counselor, Vice President.
Chrissiane, you're next.
I don't have a lot to add to that, but my question is, we're talking about seventy-nine, when would that happen? When those signs would be done? We're talking a couple of years away, right?
Yeah, but design is sooner.
We need something now.
Yeah, design is sooner. So, so that, that's why I said, you know, we don't need to wait until they're up. I think we just need to wait until there's an agreement on what they're gonna look like. And as soon as we know that, okay, fabrication, all that stuff, fine, that's years down the road. And it's crazy to wait for that, because you're just letting money stay on the table. But as soon as we sort of understand, okay, what do we want people to associate with wayfinding in Fall River? What is, you know, what is it's gonna look like? What's the overall, whether it's color palette, font, all that, you know, stuff? Is it, you know, is it electronic, is it just regular text? Who knows? That will be decided by the group. But at the end of the day, I don't think that decision is that far off. I think that the fabrication is a ways off, the installation's a ways off. But the, the design is probably not that far away. And then once we agree on it, you know, I think you can start, we can start actually making choices based upon what we know is gonna happen, without it having happened yet.
Well, when it comes to the signage, you know, like the first phase that's completed now, it was mostly all state signs. So we didn't have to worry about one-ways or no left turns or no right turns, traffic lights, pedestrians. You know, you're gonna have all the new pedestrian signal lights, so everything will be a little bit different. With this one, I agree with what Seth's saying, is that, you know, you're gonna have street signs. How do we want them to look? Do we want directional signs up that are gonna say, you know, the Cove Restaurant, the Battleship Cove? Do we want, but those, those are the ones, yes.
So that's what I'm talking about, just, just to be clear. And I didn't, that's a thank you, that's actually really helpful. So we're not talking about street signs, we're not talking about state signs, we're not talking about, you know, motorists trying to make sure they don't crash into another motor signs, right? What we're actually talking about is, there's a portion of the Route seventy-nine project that's actually a walkable park that goes under a bridge. And, and I think, Ash, we talked about lighting on that and what, how to, you know, make that bridge safe and. And, and I think, Ash, we talked about lighting on that and what, how to, you know, make that bridge safe and beautiful and whatever. But through that park, there is going to be signage. And so if you imagine, um, the, the sign with all the granite, um, the, the giant pieces of Fall River granite uh, at the bottom of the ramp up 195, um, you know, that was a, an initial proposal. Is, you know, what if all the signs were, you know, had some sort of foundation in granite? Um, that, you know, then had signage that could be changed out. Whether it's electronic, whether it's, it's modular, I don't know. And I'm not, you know, I'm not the person making that decision. Um, but those are the kind of signs we're talking about. And it would have restaurants and it would have, um, you know, true wayfinding stuff. So, uh, you know, Veterans Memorial Park, uh, I'm sorry, um, you know, specific, the wall, right? Um, Portuguese American Monument, Iwo Jima Monument, the Battleship, um, you know, Lizzie Borden House, whatever. I mean, I don't even know what would be on, because there's, of all the stuff we think about, there's probably five times as many things that, you know, that you would know if you're from here that people really need to know about and learn about. And that's really the, the beauty of these signs. But they are going to be aesthetically interesting because they're about finding places that are not just the normal, you know, President Avenue. You know, they're actual wayfinding signs.
Thank you. You, Seth, Chrissiane? Ashley, do you have anything to add?
Um, just, just a little bit in the sense that I'm in agreement that this is definitely a multi-tiered project.
Absolutely.
And it's about the highways, it's about highways and byways. But it, at the highway level, there's also besides the, the green signs and the blue signs, I want to remind people there's a really sad wooden sign, um, up on 24 as well. And I don't know where the ownership with the sign like that lies? Um, but I, I think, I think it's about, um, tackling this as, as just phases. You know, as we talk about Route 70, 79, um, you know, what is the low hanging fruit with this? Is the wooden sign a low hanging fruit? Um, is, is getting this app, um, up and going, uh, with some of the funds that perhaps are available. Um, and definitely as you guys have redone the city website, housing that within there. And so that there's infrastructure to continually update it as the technology updates as well. And as locations move and, and change and, and, and life happens. Um, but I actually think this is a really exciting opportunity that, that I know it's been years in the making. And Route 79 has been years in the making, but. But, but there is, there is, there is like a nice sunset on the, on the horizon that I think we, we are heading towards. Um, and I would be interested in learning a little bit more about what some other cities are implementing. We talked a little bit about some of the cities that are using, um, apps or QR codes and kind of just informing ourselves a little bit more about that.
I think, I think that's good. I think that we should know that. Maybe on another meeting, we should have the head of the computer system here to come down and give us a talk on what they can and can't do. Um, maybe even just for the city website to have things to do in Fall River. And list a bunch of things with the addresses. So anybody comes in, they GPS and go to that location to see whatever. Just like I think we should have a calendar of events. So that I know when you're having, you know, a Halloween thing, uh, at the Battleship, uh, you know, I know what people. So if I don't know what to do on a Friday or Saturday night and I look and I see local bars in the city and who the musicians are that are there, you know, let there be one person that funnels that in. If we have a tourism person in the mayor's office, let that be her job, that people call in and they put in, maybe you have to have a password, um, but you call, this is my password. And I want to say we're having an event on this day and this day, when we have feasts or bazaars or, that people know what's going on. There's so much more going on, but we don't really, um, know about it.
Jason, do you have anything to add from a historic perspective?
Uh, yes, um, just if you may. Sure, Jason Bouchard-Naraki, 45 Bigelow Street, um, and I chair the Historical Commission. Um, so it, just in my experience with, in other cities, uh, primarily for a decade I lived in Providence. And one of the things that the city of Providence had done with their wayfinding was taking more emphasis onto the neighborhoods. Um, if you've ever gone through and noticed their street signs, they're pretty cool. They have the street name, but then right above it, they have the neighborhood name. And, um, if Fall River can do something like that where you have emphasis on the Highlands uh, or even like the little neighborhoods, the little commercial districts that are in those neighborhoods. Like in South End, you have the, uh, the little commercial center along East Main Street. Um, in the Highlands, you have around New Boston Bakery, you have that little village. Um, so, and that can be easily achieved with the street sign. But then having more like a history of the neighborhood onto the city's website, which is something that Providence has as well. But, um, and, um, you know, that's, I know we're talking a lot about 79, um, Route 79. But there's, um, you know, we have a whole lot of the other part of the city that needs a little bit of attention. Like when you, when you're coming onto 195 eastbound, there's a sign that says downtown Fall River right just before you hit, uh, hit the tunnel. But once you get to the exit, there's no sign as to where you're turning for downtown Fall River. You're coming in the opposite direction, there's no sign period that says downtown Fall River. So you're at the mercy of, do I take Plymouth Ave? Do I take Pleasant Street? And from there, you have no idea where you're going. So there's a lot of, um, you know, emphasis on, uh, obviously wayfinding, but also with, um, you know, the historic assets of the city. You have the Mill District on Pleasant Street, you have downtown, um, South Main Street, Kennedy Park. So there's a lot of, um, I'm jumping around, but there's, um, the Historical Commission would love to be involved in a project like this. We love fund projects like this. Um, so, and yeah.
No, I think that's good. I mean, we have Homestead parks in the city that, you know, we should be. And the one I love is when you come off of the Veterans Memorial Bridge and you take a right and the sign says Tiverton, New Bedford. Doesn't say a word about Fall River. That drives my husband insane. I wasn't on that team fighting, but if you want to bring it back, I'll be there fighting with you.
Just make sure you give your name and address for the record.
Kathy Kroger, Lafayette Durfee House. I think in traveling up and down 95, the one thing I've noticed is the brown signs, which are the historic signs. And I think the bigger picture is just getting people off the highway, as you said. Um, and we need to probably start in Westport and Swansea and Somerset and up in Berkeley. So that they are anticipating that there are historic sites to, to see. Just, you know, making them more aware, enticing them. And then in the city, I love what Gail did because I've seen a lot of those signs in traveling also. You're standing next to a historic site, you don't know the details, and, and there's the information. You know, at Lafayette Durfee House, people stand outside and they wonder what it is. You know, and, and we certainly don't have the means to delineate that information. But it's a really important historic site for the city, just like the Fisk House and everything else that we have here that everyone here is working on. Um, so it has to be at least a two-pronged project. One for getting people off the highway, one for what it is once you get there. And then certainly the computerized programming, you know? I don't know much about the computerized. Sure.
I don't know much about any of this. That's why I brought all the people that do have much more information than I. I just like to move Forver forward and.
It's a great idea and I think it definitely needs to separate into probably committees that do.
Help out and looking and researching different venues.
Different parts of the.
Good. Mr. Jennings, just your name and address.
Dave Jennings from Lafayette Durfee House. Um, we've been doing this for quite a while. And what I found is that the city doesn't, no matter who's in charge, whoever the mayor is, they don't believe that people come to Fall River, okay? It's a lack of, of government interest in Fall River. I don't know, they want to do economic development, but they don't see tourism as a source of economic development.
Huge, it is.
All right, um, as far as signage is concerned, I'm a historical reenactor. I was down in Bourne, Massachusetts during 17th century reenactment, talking to people from New Jersey, all right? I said, Dave, have you ever stopped at the Battleship? No, we see it coming over the Bragger Bridge, but we don't know how to get to it. So once we get to, to the Cape, all we want to do is stay in the Cape and then drive home. That's two destinations right through the city. And I think that we should have a kiosk or something down at the new train station that's coming in. That's coming up in what, February 24, uh, 24, right? It's supposed to be open, it's supposed to have a train coming in, it's supposed to be coming from Boston. It's supposed to bring economic development, it's supposed to bring tourism, it's supposed to bring X, Y, and Z. Same thing they said about the Bragger Bridge. But if there's no signage, as how, or if it's not on the city website, and I think that's where it starts, is the city website. It's got to begin there with everything that we want to delineate. You know, it's time to lock and load on this shit, you know? It, it's time to do it. Because we're, we're watching, like Dave said, millions of dollars are going, going through the city, nothing, nobody's staying there. And if you don't believe in, in the, in the city itself, if you don't believe in this, that tourism is an actual fact of economic development, then nothing's going to happen. It starts at the top.
You're absolutely right. It generates money. I've tried.
When, when we did the, the, um, the conference down at Heritage State Park, we had three, three cities there. Well, we had Nantucket, we had Amherst, and we had New Bedford. What did they have in common? They all had a paid tourism director. They had staff, they had a freaking office, oh my God. You know, 21st century. Uh, instead of like everybody trying, you know, everybody's like scattered here trying to do their own thing. And it's time to get unionized or whatever, you know, solidified and actually be serious about this. Instead of talking about it, we can talk, talk, talk. Nothing's going to get done.
Well, I'm hoping it will, Mr. Jennings, and that was the reason for this meeting. Because I hear from a lot of people what their concerns are. And hopefully, you know, having a meeting like this, the mayor does watch these meetings too. Um, and certainly he'll know that really we do have an interest, a great interest in tourism.
Yeah.
And how it is, it is an economic development.
It works in other cities and towns. Why can't it work here?
You go to Virginia, I mean Charleston, see the older homes there?
Yeah.
Oh my God, they're nothing compared to what we have. Are our homes here better? Are architects here better?
Yeah.
But there's some beautiful homes. When you walk, I mean, especially up in the Highlands and not just, but some of the side streets, when you're driving by, you don't catch the beauty of it. But when you're walking, there's some homes that are well hidden that are built in the 1800s. Um, I think Fall River, I, I love Fall River. I've, I've been here for so many, many years. We have an unbelievable history. I mean, if you go to my office outside our corridor, we have very old pictures. And in 19, not even, 18, 1868, North Park was farmed. It had cows and the whole nine yards and to know that, to see it now. So we, I think we need to get that out there. And one of the things I don't understand is when you're on Millikan Boulevard and you want to take 195 east to west, you have this beautiful granite that says welcome to Fall River. There's nothing there telling you, okay, if you go to the north end, this is what's in the north end. If you go to the south end, this is what it is. So, and there's, that is always packed with cars, in and out, in and out. Whether you're coming from Central Street or, or anywhere, the waterfront, you've got to come up that way. And there's nothing in that area that would tell us, oh my God, they have this. Whether it's restaurants, Christopher's on South Main is doing so much right now, but nobody knows about it. Because they don't even know how to get there. You know, some people don't even know how to get to Christopher's in South Main because it's such a little new place.
And there's a lot of places like that. And I remember a few years back, they had a Christmas walking tour. And I mean Charlie, you know Charlie, his house is phenomenal. And it's decorated that period. Jim Sewell House, out of the park. Alfred Lima, God rest his soul, his house, beautiful. There's only been three owners there. They have the original Icebox and Butler's Steak, it's gorgeous. Because we were pushing for the CPA, we had a meeting at his house and I went in. I couldn't believe it. The woodwork, gorgeous. Maybe the Historical Society could do that, get some of these people to open their doors for Christmas.
They used to do that.
I love that.
They, they did that years ago. Just don't want to open their house, they're afraid.
Well, then you can't. I mean, I let you come to my house, but really I don't have anything in mind. I'm not really a decorator. I don't have an icebox. Okay, I understand, I understand. Um, if you just give your name and address.
Just one more thing.
Oh, sure.
The, um, the biggest, you know, historical thing around here is Lizzie Borden, let's face it, all right? We don't promote that because we don't want to promote a, um, a murderer. But she was acquitted, okay? Look at Salem, Salem witch trials. It didn't even happen in Salem, it happened in Danvers, all right? That is the perfect marketing ploy right there that we could do here in Fall River. You know, it's all BS. Salem is all BS. That's all I got to say. But they make a hell of a lot of money on it.
I don't know, but everywhere you go, everybody knows Lizzie Borden. I was in Dominican last year and there was a young man that travels to Boston because you guys have Lizzie Borden. I said, yep, we do.
Google Lizzie, Lizzie Borden, 50,000 hits come up on Lizzie Borden. One, one Sunday afternoon, we had, Le- when Leanne Wilber called me up, Sunday afternoon, I was at the house. She says, Dave, I got some, some tourists here, they want to, they want to come down. I said, okay. I get a knock on the door. I got 40 Japanese tourists outside with cameras that don't speak English. I got one person that speaks English. They come here to see Lizzie Borden. People come here to see Lizzie Borden's house or Maplecroft.
Well, when I worked at the District Attorney's Office, coming out of the District Attorney's Office, I can't count the number of times I took the camera and took a picture of the group that was there. There are a lot of people that come to see that. So maybe there, there should be a pamphlet too of what other things are around that people may be interested in. I brought a group of, um, Japanese people who were pigeon racers, pigeon racing people. I brought them and they wanted to go, we, I, we got a bus and I brought them on a tour of Fall River. And one of the stops was at the cemetery. And Louis Howell, who was a speechwriter for Roosevelt's, I explained to them all about him, how the president had come here for his funeral, his wife was the first female postmaster. And it just so happened as I was leaving, um, oh, Tommy Eaton was running the, at the time. And Tom said, Linda, I want you to meet. It was Louis Howell's great grandson, who's an attorney for an Indian tribe down in New Mexico. Him and his girlfriend were there. He couldn't believe that this group of people, and it was wonderful because his girlfriend makes Indian jewelry. She gave me the nicest necklace. It was wonderful. But they all got to meet him and it just happened.
Yeah.
And we went all around, I mean, and then they just have Louis Latimer. I mean, this man did so much with the electric light bulb and the telephone. And he's buried right here in Fall River. Yes, who knows, that is Gail.
I mean, it's been a time we've been in this house, I said it before. I mean, I live a nine iron from the entrance, you know, a bit of gauze, that's pretty damn close. Um, and I can't tell you how many people you see, you know, Missouri plates or whatever. I'm, I'm in there doing all the plantings as I've been doing for, I don't know, 12 years. And I can't tell you how many cars I popped into and drove them around. Give them an informal 45-minute nickel tour. And they're like thrilled that people come from Michigan. I went, went two cars once and they came because one of the sisters, it was her 60th birthday and she wanted to stay in the Lizzie Borden room for her birthday. And I happily went into, like, she went to bakery for lunch. And I got out of work, 5 o'clock, I said, meet you there. And I wandered for an hour tour and they were like over the moon. Why don't, why don't we have things like that? I just didn't talk to them, anyway.
Alex, Alex, I just had a quick question. What's the quickest, um, is it the wayfinding, is it the computer, the app? What would be the most immediate thing that we could get?
I don't know. I don't know if it would be an app or. Can we do an app? Does somebody know how to do an app on a phone that says, you know, app of Fall River sites? And then it would give you a whole list? I don't know. Look, you know what, I have a cell phone, but honestly, when I get stuck, my 12-year-old grandson figured it out. So I don't want to lie to him, say, I can't, I don't.
Just trying to figure out, what's the most immediate?
I think that's a good point, Chrissiane.
What can we do immediately?
Google Maps, if you bring up the map, you can, you know, try to, and, and I don't know. I've never looked at Fall River to be honest, whether, you know, any of those sites.
Who knows anything about cell phones? Andrew will check that out for us. Can you check that out for the next meeting? Andrew will check that out for the next meeting and see what happens. Alexander, your next name and address.
Hi, Alex Silva, 148 Purchase Street, Preservation Society, Fall River. Uh, I won't repeat, but in regards to like an app, a QR code could be used to link to like the city's website, which has a map of everything on it and a list, so that can circumvent the need and cost of an app. It'd just be like QR codes on, like strategically placed around tourism areas. And then people just scan them and then they can see everything, everything they want in Fall River. Um, just pushing back a little bit on the sole GPS and not signage argument. I would just say that if you are focusing on like, you know, Google Maps or whatever, you're kind of at the whim of Google's own algorithm. So, you know, you're not really promoting exactly what you want.
you're kind of at the whim of Google's own al- algorithm, so you know, you're not really promoting exactly what you want. Um, also for people not from here, uh, they wouldn't know what to look for and what to Google. I know when I'm driving through a new place, I'm looking for the signs on the road and like that'll be a quick detour sort of thing. Um, it, I think it'd be beneficial to, you know, promote the bigger attractions and then accentuate them with signage at and around the attractions so people extend their stays and extend the, the, you know, the expenses that they do with their tourism. Um, I also recently went to Charleston, beautiful place. They have a lot, a lot of s- small, even small signage for all kinds of just historical notes. Um, they incorporate images with engravings on a lot of signs.
Yeah.
Over in Charleston, I was just.
Couple of months ago, but they, they incorporate a lot of imagery and maps with engravings in their plaques and stuff, so that could be a whole other dimension added to our signs. Um, they even have signs, you know, for places that are no longer there, you know? This fence is all that remains of this building, that was the first, so forth. So that is, you know, Al adds to the walkability and heritage tourism aspects. Uh, other ideas, I won't, I won't repeat anything, but, you know, placing them where, not only where there's already existing high traffic, both pedestrian and vehi- vehicular, uh, but also desired locations. This could include, um, you know, I know a lot of this is up in the air, so these are just ideas, but any future waterfront hotel in the new Route 79 project, I mean, you should be linking hotel with signage as much as you po- as possibly can. Uh, you would hope that there'd be a future visitor or tourism center added to this project and that would be a perfect spot for signage. Um, future trolley stops, I think if we're actually going to be moving forward with trolleys, thinking about, you know, where we want them to be and incorporating signage at those locations, possibly even combining it with bus stops and shelters. So it's a double whammy kind of advertising with the trolley crowd and the trolley crowd and the, you know, bus, uh, transients. Um, the Quaker Shan River Rail Trail is something that wasn't mentioned, signage along there, especially at junctions, junctions with streets where there's, you know, nearby businesses. Uh, I didn't hear the future buyer reserve welcome center, which is a huge, huge, huge ecotourism possibility for the city. Um, anything around there, but also signage to help get there, which, you know, places are best to park. I know all of my friends who I've tried to direct to the buyer reserve GPS, you know, Google takes you to, you know, the middle of the woods sometimes to park. So, you know, just kind of streamlining that. As the city looks forward to future Pleasant Street revitalization, that would be another perfect location for other signage, the commuter rail station, the Olmsted Parks, those were all mentioned. Um, yeah, and then, uh, you know, at the signage locations, you can start advertising, you know, possible tours, like food tours, we have a lot of great ethnic food opportunities, Underground Railroad, Historic Highlands, Lizzie Borden, those were all mentioned. Uh, I think that's it for my new ideas.
Alex, thank you so much. You always bring such wonderful information, everyone just gave such wonderful information. This was the first meeting. If there's anybody, maybe Jason with the Historical Society and Alex with Preservation, to look at what, what is the complete listing of historical things we have? Um, maybe looking at, uh, Chrissiane doing up whatever blurbs about everything down in your end at the Battleship. Uh, Sandy and Dave, maybe if you could check with Boston Tourism and the money that they have, what they've done in other communities. Laura seems to have her, uh, her ear, her right down to all of the signage. And I think what Jason brought up was a good idea. Also to look at, if we do signs, does Diamond or Durfee do signs? Do they do signs as well?
Either that or, I mean, I have two companies that I work with that will do whatever we want, so.
Well, we still have Bristol County Opera Money left, so there's three of us here that I think would support using some of that towards it or towards the com- computer thing. You know what I like? When you drive by a house that's for sale and it's got a sign outside and you click on it and it says, "This house features, you know, so many bedrooms, blah, blah, blah." Do they have anything like that to go by? Like if I went by the Lafayette Durfee House in Sydney?
We have QR sign up front.
And that will do it?
That'll bring the Facebook page, yeah.
So maybe those QR codes are good to have.
Yeah, yeah. You know what else?
Good for you, Andrew, because you're young and know all that stuff and I'm very happy to have you on this committee with me.
It's the neighborhood sign, like Corky Row, the Flint, North End, Columbia Street, everything.
Steve Brook and that kind of thing.
Yeah, just an area of, uh, a QR code in that neighborhood that gives the history of the neighborhood.
All right, well, listen, I thank everyone for coming. I hope that it was enjoyable for everyone. If we could look at different signs perhaps with Gail, on what kind of signs would work to be consistent? You know, some ideas of different signs. And anybody has any ideas about this meeting? Anything that you want to volunteer to do that you're willing to take on for this committee? Just email Lauren at city underscore council and it'll come to all of us. And I know that Thanksgiving is coming and Christmas, so let's try to get together the beginning of the year for those of us that will still be here and not retired. Um, and look at, uh, step two, to try to keep this going so we can get it done. Thank you all so much for coming.
Thank you, Andrew.
And anybody that has photos, if you want to leave them with Lauren so she can make copies of them